You got covered. If you weren't in the joint, but you'll be in good shape. So, working out one first. E2. E2. I don't know if you have any extra questions. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you for giving me that little bit of productive discipline, you know. Let's go ahead and get started, please. Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas will be found on topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the department staff, the planning department staff, will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes, please. Chris, please take role.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos?
Here.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Haw?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Canar?
Here.
Ms. Ringler?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
We have nine in a quorum.
Excellent. Full house. Okay, first thing on the agenda, we'll review the minutes from July 18. Any amendments, modifications, or comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Mr. Beck?
Motion approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay. Chris, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, excellent. Communications to the commission. Mr. Feiner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple announcements of upcoming events that you should be aware of. One is this Thursday, we have our Futures 2040, Topeka Regional Transportation Plan kickoff meeting for the public. That is this Thursday at the library. There's a session at noon, as well as a session at 5:30 after work. Please feel free to come and enjoy. And I asked the public as well, any transportation issues for the future. This would be a great event and opportunity to give feedback on. The other event is this next week, we have the National Park Service coming into town to do a design charrette with the Oregon Trail Riverfront Park. They're very interested in making that part of the Oregon Trail historic site, and so they have offered their own design services. There are some, you are more than welcome. It's actually the entire week, but if you want to come by Tuesday, that is a day-long charrette. And then, I think Friday is the presentation. It's all going to be at the Great Overland Station. So, if you have any interest in that, please let me know. We'll get more word to you.
And, Mr. Feiner, for those that may not fully understand what a big fancy word like charrette means, would you like to elaborate what that is?
Sure. Oh, charrette, that is, that's French for cart, I believe.
Excellent.
And you're supposed to put your plans on the cart as it comes down the middle aisle. Is that correct? Something like that?
I think that's very close, yes.
So, it is a brainstorming design session as to kind of lay out what the park space should be like in front of the Great Overland Station to commemorate and interpret the Oregon Trail and the Prappins Berry and the historical events that happened there.
Super. And it's my understanding this is more of a community involvement event, so it's, charrette is allowing others to get involved in it.
That is correct.
Excellent. Anything else?
I'm sorry, that'd be it.
Super. Thank you. All right, item D, declarations of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. Mr. Beck?
Mr. Chair, I will recuse myself from item E2.
Okay, any others? I would like to note, I too will be recusing myself from item E2. I actually have representations with an entity indirectly involved with the project. So, as a result of this, once we're done with item E1, I'll entertain a motion to hand the gavel off to Mr., actually, I don't even know that we need to do a motion.
No, we don't need to.
We will be handling the gavel without a motion to my vice chair, and he'll handle it soundly from there, so we're in good hands. So, excellent.
Lucky me.
Super. Okay, item E1, unless we have any other ex parte communications. Item E1, Ms. Driver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the case for PUD 163. It's the property over at 1025 Southwest Western. The planning commission deferred the item at its Monday, July 18 meeting. They had asked staff to look at the following few items and to come back with a recommendation. Those three items were to revise the statement of operations excluding references to faith-based organizations. That has been done. A revised statement of operations is in your packet tonight. Another item we looked at was to determine if fencing is appropriate along any of the property lines. Staff did review the need for fencing. We looked at it and made a determination that based on the land use pattern in the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood, it was not something we necessarily typically require than put up a fence. We looked at the surrounding properties, so we're not necessarily, we're not going to be requiring a fence. We did discuss the need for a fence with the request for a fence with the applicant, and they indicated that they would be willing to do so if it came up to that. But the fence is not something we're requiring and is in the conditions of approval. We also looked at the need to add a sunset clause or an expiration date to the PUD. According to the legal department, state law does not allow a PUD zoning to expire. Since this is an amendment to the district map, it differs in its legal requirements from a conditional use permit. However, we did add some language to the conditions of approval that would allow, would require the owner to allow the city to make inspections for compliance with any of the conditions of approval, including the statement of operations. In the event the use is not compliant, the use changes or ceases, the planning commission would then have the ability to initiate and make a recommendation on a zone change pursuant to TMC 18245, which is the procedures for amending the district map. The conditions have been revised in your packet tonight, and the revised statement of operations is attached as well. Staff is recommending approval subject to the revised conditions in your packet tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Driver. Questions from the commission? We had concerns regarding this before. Both commissioners feel we've had those concerns addressed adequately. Do we have anything else we need to have clarified? Okay. At this time, is there an applicant, is the representative of the applicant present? Sir, would you mind stepping forward if you have anything to share?
Hello, I'm Spencer Lindsey. I'm the president and founder of Work Amendment Christ.
Do you feel the concerns that were requested to be addressed at the previous commission were something you could work within, and apparently adequately enough that we got staff's recommendation? Do you have any further questions or observations?
No, we're very happy.
Okay. Super. Any questions? This gentleman? Super. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Feeny, I do want to confirm, we would need to have this back available for public comments.
For public hearing?
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak?
I think we should, since we did request changes to give you public opportunity.
I agree.
Okay. Although this item was opened and available for public comments last time, we're going to go ahead and continue that this time. So, at this moment, we're going to open up the meeting for public comments. If you wish to speak on or against this, now's your turn, your opportunity. So, please step forward if you would.
Mr. Chairman, we can hardly hear.
Okay, I'm sorry. I appreciate you saying that. I've got my microphone bent down about as far as it'll go. So, I'll reiterate, at this time, we're going to open up the meeting for public comments regarding item E1. If you're here to speak publicly about this item, this is your opportunity to step forward and say your piece, so. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Further discussion or comments from the commission? I appreciate the staff working diligently with the representatives of the property owners to come up with a solution for this. I think this gets us closer to where we need to be to at least working for a working model on the project. So, at this time, I'd entertain a motion regarding this. I'd make a motion that it be approved. Ms. Jordan, did you have a, were you going to make a?
I would make that motion.
All right, Ms. Jordan, please do.
So, I move that we approve the zone change from R2 to the PUD planned unit development for this 1025 Southwest Western.
Okay, and to confirm, that's with the additional modifications as noted by staff, correct?
Yes, with the modifications.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Canar is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Chris, please read roll.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item E2. Mr. Beck and myself will be recusing ourselves, so at this time, I'll pass the gavel to Mr. Woods. He has the call.
Okay, I think we're now prepared to take up item number E2, the PUD 1602 by Heartland Management Company. We are scheduled for a public hearing today, but first, we're going to have some briefing, correct, from?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
I'm in trouble being out here, I'm sorry.
We're going, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to take up item number E2, the PUD by Heartland Management Company, and I believe before we open our hearing, Ms. Driver is going to give us an update.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. This is the case, PUD 162 by the Newcomer Funeral Group. They're requesting rezone from O&amp;I2 Office and Institutional District and R1 Single Family Dwelling District with a conditional use permit for a parking lot, all to planned unit development district for O&amp;I2 uses, plus the restrictions of building number two being limited to a professional administrative office only. The properties are at 520 Southwest 27th Street and 500 Southwest 27th Street. The proposed development area, which is the area outlined in red on the aerial, contains 2.27 acres. The PUD is proposing a new single-story office building, which is shown on the PUD plan as building number two. They would have a maximum gross floor area of 8,600 square feet, the footprint of which would be limited to a maximum of 4,300 square feet. The rest would be below ground, since it's proposed as a single-story building. The development is proposed as two phases. Phase one is intended for the summer of 2017. The plans in that phase are to reconstruct the church's parking lot for use by both the church, which is to the east, and the newcomer facility. Remove parking lot, the parking lot along the north property line and return that to green space. Reconstruct an earth berm along the property line to the north that's intended to help improve the flow of stormwater so it reaches an inlet on the church's property near Topeka Boulevard. Also, within phase one, they would be removing their driveway entrance onto Western and then the single-lane driveway entrance onto 27th Street. Phase two, which is a long-term phase, there's no timeframe indicated, they would be constructing building number two, reconfigure parking as needed, and relocate and construct a new stormwater detention pond. Access to the new development area is going to be provided from Southwest 27th Street via shared driveway. The other two will be closed. Couple of comments on the design and setbacks. The PUD proposes setbacks along both Western and the north property line, being 30 feet, which is consistent with the R1 zoning of the area. The building, as shown on the PUD plan, will front onto Southwest Western Street. Elevations are required to be consistent with the design of building number one. Elevations are attached in your packet. Signage that's proposed for building number two are also limited from what the sign regulations of the standard O&amp;I2 zoning would allow. So, for example, building number two is limited to a 25-square-foot sign, four feet in height, and 25-square-foot wall signs. I wanted to make a comment, the plan is not proposing any new parking stalls, they're only removing and reconfiguring existing parking. A few comments on the traffic volumes. City Traffic Engineer is in attendance tonight. The development was determined to not meet the thresholds of requiring a traffic impact study. However, because of some concerns from the neighborhood and lack of more recent counts, the city did conduct traffic counts on June 22. Those showed that neither 27th nor Western exceed your general federal highway metrics for local and collector streets. 27th is classified as a collector street, Western is a local roadway. The city engineer's summary of findings is attached in your packet as well. Basically, the existing office, the newcomer office, is generating between 11 and 18 percent of the existing total volumes on Western, 4 percent of the existing volumes on 27th Street. The total trips that are generated by the newcomer office is 182 trips per day at a rate of 11.4 trips per 1,000 square feet. Using that same rate, the new development would add an additional 98 trips for 280 trips per day. The city traffic engineer estimated that based on the developed conditions, traffic on Western is only going to increase between 0 and 5 percent. Traffic on 27th Street would increase between about 2 percent, from 2,150 approximately to 2,200 trips per day. This was determined to have either a minimal or no adverse impact on the roadway safety. Comments? I want to, there's a section in the staff report about public comment. I do want to make a note here is that I did receive two phone calls from residents at 2509 Southwest Western and 2501 Southwest Granthurst today. They did not, were not able to send anything in writing. They just wanted to note their opposition because of the fact that they feel this would alter the character of the neighborhood, having a new office there. Going into a little of the plans for the stormwater, since that was another concern from the neighborhood, stormwater improvements are proposed in two phases. The applicant did submit a stormwater management report to the city. That report's been approved by the Department of Public Works. Phase one is proposing to remove the parking lot on the north side, return that to green space. Part of phase one, they'd be constructing approximately a three-foot-tall berm just south of the property line that's intended to help divert water to an inlet at the northeast corner of the church's property. Phase two, which would then include construction of a new detention pond adjacent with the berm. That detention pond would then discharge into a swale and into the inlet located at the, on the church's property. The city engineer did determine that both this inlet and the 21-inch main on Topeka Boulevard have capacity. Property owners are expected to maintain that inlet on the church's property in the The applicant did indicate that there's, they would be relocating a tool shed that's currently located in a drain adjustment. The area is classified urban suburban low-density residential by the Land Use and Growth Management Plan. However, the remnant tract that is located just north of the existing parking lot that's zoned R1 is considered a transitional area, since it transitions from non-residential down to residential. PUDs may be used between non-residential and residential uses to provide some flexibility for limited development in a manner that's not out of character with the area. The portion of that property that's north of the parking lot is considered to not be suitable anymore for a new single-family house. The PUD, in this case, allows the owner flexibility to expand his office that's been on the site since 1968. With the design parameters established on the PUD, such as the setback limitations, coverage, elevation, design standards, signage, limits on the uses, landscaping, it should help to ensure the use is a step down from what your standard O&amp;I2 zoning would permit. Staff does recommend approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Thank you. And the applicant's here to take your questions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Driver. I guess, are there any questions at all from commissioners about what we just heard from Ms. Driver before we turn to the applicant? Commissioners, if not, I think we are prepared to hear from the applicant before opening up for the public. I see Mr. Jarboe making his way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We want to thank you for your service on this commission's valuable service, and we really appreciate the commitment we've had from staff to help us try to identify and then solve problems that we felt came out of both the neighborhood meeting and communications from members of the neighborhood. And frankly, we appreciate the neighbors' comments as well, because they help us focus on what we felt were some good solutions. And that's why we asked for the continuance that brings us to tonight. With me tonight, my law partner, Art Glassman, is here. Mr. Glassman has negotiated the contract with the church, and if there are any questions about that, he's the one that we can address those questions. Mr. Ren Newcomer, who's the president and CEO of the organization that is the applicant, Mr. Mark Boyd, who is with the consulting engineering firm that provided the drawings that are the basis of this application, and a representative of the church are here. So, I may not know the answer to various technical questions, but I think we have the people here who can answer those questions. The, I'm going to try to go through the issues that were developed in the process, and the process really started with the application and then went through the neighborhood meeting and multiple conversations with staff. And part of what we identified as a concern is what's the building going to look like? So, although not initially retained, we retained an architect to take a look at both the scale of the building, how big a building do we really need to contain our intended purposes? But what orientation should the building have on the site? And so, originally, the building was laid out kind of east and west, and now it's laid out north and south, because we felt that was more consistent with our current building and also consistent with the neighborhood. Now, when we think about the neighborhood here, one thing that's important, and I'm sure you all are familiar with this, but the, to the west, we have some larger structures, a church and a very large home, multi-story home. And of course, to the east, we have the church that we're buying part of this property from. So, actually, our structures, our existing one and the one that we intend to build similar to it, are one-story structures and have a residential scale. And so, we think will fit in well with the neighborhood. Now, obviously, that's a judgment call, and you're likely to hear from people who don't think it fits in the neighborhood, and ultimately, that may be part of the question. This applicant has been in business for 120 years. There's 40 employees currently at this location. With the addition, we estimate there would be 45. The structure is designed to contain their HR department, and you might think, well, that's a lot of HR for 40 people. But actually, they have 120 employees here in the city of Topeka, and they're located in multiple states with facilities all over Kansas and in a variety of other states. So, HR is actually a big deal. Secondly, they have technology concerns that they feel they're going to need to expand into. And you need to understand that this has been a family business for 120 years. Mr. Newcomer's children are now involved in the business, and this design is intended to allow the business to grow so that his children can push this business along in the same way that he's been able to since his involvement with the business. So, that's the purpose here, is to keep this Topeka business in business and able to stay here in Topeka, as opposed to going somewhere else potentially, because they are very widespread in terms of their business. Now, process-wise, the application was filed back on June 3. We, after our meetings with staff and neighbors, and I personally met with some of them, we could identify some concerns. And one of the biggest concerns had to do with the driveway out onto Western, which the original proposal included keeping that driveway. And we gathered that that was a major concern of theirs due to the feeling that traffic might come out that way. By changing the orientation of the building to north and south, we can close that driveway and still have a good traffic pattern on the remainder of the site. So, that was actually the purpose, or part of the purpose behind reorienting the building was to make it all work and close that driveway, which we felt was addressing concern of the neighborhood. Another significant concern of the neighborhood had to do with some of the landscaping. And we were able to save a couple of very large trees by changing the orientation of the building, so that those trees can remain on the site and not get chewed up with parking lots and buildings. That was really the focus, as I heard from the neighborhood, what I understood their issues to be and the ones we could address. So, we went through the process, then of trying to identify the concerns. Once we felt we'd identified the concerns, engaged an architect, and then we had Schmidt, the Schmidt Engineering Firm, go back and redesign this. And that's what you have here in front of you that's up on, well, it's on my screen right now. I don't know if it's on yours or not. Another concern had to do with drainage. And a number of people have expressed concern about a pond being constructed. Now, the technical name for it is a pond, but it's a pond without water unless it's raining, because this is a dry detention pond that's designed to accumulate water during rainstorms, and then, over a very few hours, disperse that water out into the drainage system for the city of Topeka. So, part of the original phasing of this project is to create a berm along the north, our north property line, that will keep the water on our site, and then eventually construct this dry detention pond that pond that will contain water and keep us just from flooding people downstream. Now, a piece of this has to do with existing drainage. Mr. Boyd looked at the drainage facility that's down there on the corner of the church property and found that its capacity was significantly in excess of any of the water that we would potentially dump into it. So once we can get the water to the public system, it will easily handle it, and he can talk to you about the details of that if that's of interest to you. Another problem has to do with, in Ms. Driver's report, she talked about this storage building. Well, the church has had a storage building on a piece of parking lot, and it's actually in the way of drainage. So it interferes with drainage currently. And by removing that storage building, we can actually return the drainage design on the current site without changing anything else to what it was designed for in the first place, which should improve any drains that's currently escaping the site. So those two things together, we think, will properly address any drainage issues. Another thing that I think is important here, Ms. Driver said there's no new parking. Actually, there's less parking. There's less hard surface in the design that we're proposing. Other things that happen when you do that, when you look at the design, is it possible to get this back up on the main screen? There we go. That's the one I'm looking at. When you look at this, the parking lot on the tract that goes with the Newcomer tract, you can see, relatively speaking, what I would call a modern design for a parking lot because you have raised areas against which cars park, areas that can be landscaped, and the real design here is instead of a flat lot, which is what is out there today, if you go and just look at the church's parking lot, you'll see a modern design of parking and circulation. And the other thing, another benefit to the neighborhood really, is when this change gets implemented, when we do the new parking lot, we also do new parking lights, parking lot lights. And the new standards, of course, require that any developer of a parking lot make sure that your light doesn't go off into the neighborhood. And so part of the functionality here is to get a better parking lot for purposes of stormwater, to get a better parking lot for purposes of just appearance, circulation, and lighting. So there are a number of varieties that come about through phase one of this project. One of the other issues that came up was whether or not this building would fit into the neighborhood. We were concerned originally about limiting the size of the structure to something that wouldn't work in the out years, especially because we don't know exactly what the out years are. So that's why we engaged an architect, to actually look at it and do a kind of a space study and say, okay, if you're going to do the things you say you're going to do, how much space do you actually need? And that led us to suggest to staff a smaller building than had originally been suggested as a maximum building. As you know, when you approve a PUD and you approve the scale of the building, that limits the scale to just that. And we can't just make the building bigger because we want to. We can't just get a building permit to make the building bigger because we're stuck with what is approved in this process. And so we think that's an important response because we've tried to scale the building down at the same time we address the neighborhood concerns. The last concern I want to talk about is the access issue. And on this drawing, you notice along Western, there's a circle. That's where the driveway comes out that's there now, and we're going to take that away. And then there's a driveway down on 27th Street that also goes away as a part of this process. So that the new entrance is a little bit to the east. It's actually where the current driveway is for the church. The only thing that happens to that driveway is it gets a little bit wider to accommodate the traffic, but it'll be a better design than is there today for that entrance, and it gets rid of, in effect, two access points. And I guess I've been doing this almost 40 years, and rarely do I suggest something where there are fewer entrances on the streets, but that's actually what we have here. And of course, we also, in this case, have the traffic engineers who've looked at it, done the traffic counts, and found that this traffic, the increase it might be caused by any increased staffing at this site, is either nominal or no substantial effect on neighboring streets. And so we feel like we've really tried to address the issues raised by staff and the neighbors and by our own consultants and provide you with a better design than we had in the first place. And we'd like to request your approval. There may be statements by some members of the public we'd like the opportunity to respond to, depending on how this goes this evening. But if you have questions, I'd be happy to try my best or get the right person up here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Jarboe. Any questions at all from commissioners for Mr. Jarboe so far?
I have a question. Can you describe a little bit what the types of berming or landscaping that you're going to use to achieve a better separation between the residential area and the parking?
Well, I'll give you the answer I think is right, and then I'll look and see what Mr. Boyd wants to correct me. At the moment, for phase one of this plan, the only thing that really happens is berming along the north side of our property to keep the water from going off into the neighborhood if it currently does. The actual landscaping plan would be a part of the building permit process, and that would then come under the rules that apply to a permit. So there is no landscaping plan per se here. Now, there are some things in here, a couple of trees that I can see. I don't know if you can, but there's a couple of big trees on here that are still going to be here because of the change we made in the orientation of the building. Basically, it's the two biggest trees, I would say, plus the trees that currently exist along the north property line. We're not making any changes there. How does it do, Mr. Boyd? Good job, he says. Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Jarboe? Okay, I see now, I think we're ready to move to the next part of our meeting and actually open up our public hearing. So at this time, if there are any members of the public who would like to address this, should we, should we? Any members of the public who'd like to come up and address this issue? Yes, sir. If you'd please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joel Taylor, 2435 Southwest Granthurst Avenue. I have a concern with the expansion of Newcomers Building and Area. As we stated before, this is the Walmart of funeral homes. They have been in business for a long time. They've been in several, I understand, 10 states. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. The detention pond is one of my main concerns of disrupting a neighborhood. It's been, since 1921, been a relative upscale neighborhood. The neighborhood in this area I moved back to after 25 years of being away from 2425 This shows you the care of the people and the area of the neighborhood, the camaraderie, and of knowing the history of this exceptional neighborhood, which is appropriately named Country Club Edition. Back to the detention pond, I understand it's going to be gone within a few hours from what Mr. Jarboe says, from collecting water. As we all know, there are unseen forecasts, things that happen to weather, such as in New Orleans, Baton Rouge. These things do happen. A three-foot berm, I do not understand how an earthen berm would take care of such a thing. We have dams a lot larger that fail in our system. A retention pond is an area that's a wet area. We have another retention pond at 3310 Southwest Banddrum. It's in a business area, and from 33rd Street to Cory Avenue, I know we're just looking at a small area here, but if you look into the overall picture of the thing, of this area, White Lakes is gone. From 33rd to Cory Avenue, from Topeka Boulevard to Kansas, is vacant. 3310 does have a retention pond, which is overgrown, filled in partway. We also have a problem with foxes in the area. I understand the last report that there were probably 10 in the Booster Place area that have attacked residents. These foxes do not have any natural predators in town, no coyotes, no wolves. To the south, to the north of us, we have Shunga Creek on 21st Street running through. And to the west of us, before you get to Burlingame, there's another pond. I have not seen it. I've seen it on the maps and such, but yes, you can close off these two driveways, but you still have to have a way to get out to Topeka Boulevard or Burlingame. And the only two that you have, or three accesses that you have to get to Topeka Boulevard, is down Western to 25th Street or 24th Street and turn there east to the street light by Quentin Heights Hill. The other option you have is to go down 27th Street to Burlingame, which is a single --
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I think we --
-- single westbound area, which is a very tight corner.
Our time has expired.
You see my concerns?
I do, yes, yes, sir.
I wish people would look into this a little deeper in the overall picture and decide what's going to happen with when they outgrow their area --
Sure, sure.
-- and want to enlarge and move somewhere else and leave us with a vacant building like 501 wants to do with us at their building.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, our, under our present rules, it's four minutes, correct, for our comments? So please state your name, your address for the record.
Amy Potter, 717 Southwest Marion Court, directly north of Newcomers Business. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to talk this evening. My husband and I live on Marion Court, directly north of Newcomers Business. We ask that you stop the wrecking ball in our residential neighborhood and vote against this proposal. First, we believe that this zoning change would violate the historic preservation plan the city adopted in 2014. It states that neighborhoods are a valuable economic asset that require maintenance and preservation. We are pursuing historic preservation status for our residential neighborhood, so a zoning change of this size would truly alter and impact our community and the entire city of Topeka. We chose to live in this neighborhood because it was historic and already established. We love the unique character defined by the architecture. Our residential neighborhood will soon celebrate its 100th birthday. Ruth Muller built and designed our residential neighborhood in the 1920s. She was the first female builder in Topeka. We lost one of these unique homes when Mr. Newcomer had it torn down and put a parking lot in its place during his first office expansion. Our residential neighborhood is historic and should be preserved, not turned into an office park. I was approached by Mr. Newcomer to see if we would consider selling our home. He said he wanted to tear it down for his second expansion. The ICA's family directly east of us on Marion Court received the same inquiry about selling their residence so that it too could be demolished for additional expansions to his business. We are happy that Topeka has a business that wants to expand and keep jobs in our community, but this is not the right location. What was once an small business on the border of our neighborhood threatens to destroy more historic homes. The Newcomer group has now outgrown its space and requires a much larger expansion, one you would normally find in an office district instead of a historic residential neighborhood. They deserve a building location that can accommodate future growth and expansion 20 to 40 years from now, something outside of a historic residential neighborhood. There are several vacant office locations ready for such an expansion. The first Newcomer expansion demolished a home, added to the existing structure, and built a parking lot. Our property lost 20% in value. This proposal will go farther than the first. It will create almost 30,000 square foot of office space, 88 parking stalls, and a very large detention pond. Detention ponds can hardly, can handle water runoff, but also overflow into yards and basements, attract snakes and wildlife, and are nasty eyesores. To be honest, we cannot afford another one of his expansions, nor can our neighbors. This zoning request will lower values for several veterans, families, young mothers, retirees, and pensioners who live on Marion Court. Jesus said to love your neighbors, not to impoverish them. We wish to stay in our homes, but a zoning change of this magnitude will ultimately destroy our residential neighborhood, if not today, 20 years from now, when the next expansion is needed, as it slightly violates the historic preservation plan and will destroy our community. Please vote no.
Thank you. Okay, our next patron to address the commission.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shane Sawyer. I live at 2601 Southwest Western, right across the road from Newcomers' property. This is Topeka Magazine, Fall 2009. In it, there is a featured article on our neighborhood. It is titled, "Architecturally Positive Edition." Let me read a little bit from it. Unbeknownst to most Topequans, an architectural treasure trove lies behind the Quentin Heights Hill in the heart of the city. The Country Club Edition neighborhood nestled in the hills overlooking the Capitol features a diverse range of house styles, French and Spanish eclectic, Georgian and colonial revival, Tudor, and international. Among the city's wide range of residential styles, this small neighborhood represents some of the most diverse and interesting home architecture. This neighborhood was developed in the 20s and 30s by Ruth McClintock-Moore, who acted as the general contractor for many of the homes. She also worked along in conjunction with architects W.E. Glover and Ted Geist and Bill de Clyde Smalley. It is no consequence that parts of the Country Club Edition resemble Westborough, where the Glover Smiley team was also hard at work during the same period. In fact, the Country Club Edition and Westborough were to extend rivals in the world of architecture and high society. The Country Club Edition fought for the mantle of the elite housing region and was known among the circles as the silk stocking district. Today, the Country Club Edition neighborhood stands as a comfortable, tree-lined residential area near the heart of Topeka, offering its architectural delights and interests to residents and anyone passing through this almost forgotten gem. That's what the article has to say. A recent meeting with Mr. Newcomer and his people, I asked Mr. Newcomer why he'd visited with the two neighbors north of his property, inquiring about a possible buyout. Amid his reply, he stated he liked green spaces, to which I made this observation. So you would buy these two houses and raise them for green space? He made no comment. The Topeka Magazine article states, "We live in an architecturally diverse and unusual neighborhood, much like Westborough. Would the city permit the expansion of commercial property at the expense of Westborough's residents and houses? I very much doubt that. I am here tonight to ask you to save our unique neighborhood from commercial encroachment. Mr. Newcomer has already raised one architecturally diverse home in our neighborhood to his commercial pursuits. To lose even one more home is unacceptable. Please consider the neighborhood, the residents, and how your decision will impact not only us, but Topeka's agriculture." us, but Topeka's agricultural history. I respectfully ask the Planning Commission to not recommend the approval of Newcomer PUD." This photo here, this is my home. It was slated to be razed by the Florence Crittenton Home because they could, didn't know what to do with it, because it was just a big old building. And we bought it in 2003 and had the zoning changed to R1. Here's a saved building in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Alice Brooks, and I live at twenty-five twenty-five Southwest Western, which is catty corner across from the Newcomer property and just north of where Shane lives. I've been there 16 years, and when I was moving to Topeka, I actually looked at 119 houses, none of which suited me. When the house that I live in now came on the market, I was having lunch with my realtor at one o'clock. We looked at it, at three o'clock, I made an offer. This was the neighborhood I wanted to live in, and I have been delighted to live there. The people are interesting, the houses are interesting. We are a community. We all know each other, we all watch out for each other. When Newcomer bought what I have always called the greenhouse, he told us it was going to be classrooms. And then one Saturday morning, a bulldozer arrived, crashed into it, and drove away. The next thing we heard, well, the building isn't in any condition to make into classrooms. No, you just bulldozed into it, of course it's not. And then he cut down trees that were in the easement without the city's permission. And suddenly, even though it was not in the plan, there was an entrance onto Western. And when we talked to him about this at our last meeting, he said, "I don't know how those trees got cut down, and I don't know anything about that driveway." How could he not know about them when he was in charge of the plan? Because of some of the things that have happened, I do not trust what's going to happen there. And I can now sit on my porch, and instead of seeing a nice neighborhood and a quiet house, I can count the drag racers at night on Topeka Boulevard, because he has cut down enough greenery between my house and Topeka Boulevard that I can see all the cars that pass by. One of the problems I think Topeka has is too many empty office buildings, too many places that have been deserted to build a newer and better building. I think if Newcomer wants to expand, this would be the ideal thing for him to do, to take one of these buildings, renovate it, and make it work for him, in some place that is not in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, our next patron to address the commission.
Hello, I'm Randy Sawyer. I live directly across the street from this proposed PUD, or on Western Street. I've lived there for 13 years now. I'm asking you to reject your planning recommendation approval to not allow it to happen, the PUD application, and remove the existing driveway entrance on Western Avenue. There was a Rayburg home on Western Avenue that was purchased and demolished to the ground back in 2009 by Mr. Newcomer, along with the plentiful trees and foliage, and it just left a wide open spectacle. You saw my house on the other speakers, my wife's, that's where I live, that house across the street. He expanded his business's building, created a driveway entrance, and a parking lot on that very side. It was just done, and it was done with the city's approval. Mr. Newcomer himself said he promised to one of our NI meetings that would not tear that house down. He did. He later expanded, I'm sorry, the view we have now from our R1 Zone District is nothing, not any beautiful home anymore, no plentiful foliage, no trees. Alls I see is parking lots, building, increased traffic, and invasive nightly beam of light is all I endure from my home, thanks to Mr. Newcomer. The nightly light beams directly from the PUD's church building, let's see, I lost some spots, sorry. Anyway, it comes clear across the street, and the trees had blocked that light before, the ones that Newcomer had removed. It completely illuminates across the parking lot, onto and into my three-story brick home each night, and it's well over 450 feet away, across their parking lot to my house. That's pretty extensive to have a light from that property. There's no plan in this PUD as how that light might be eliminated. The church and some city departments have been asked, but it had no answers. Their Western Avenue parking lot engages numerous types of traffic, cars, trucks, and even had a semi truck and trailer rig in use. They all travel through various routes in our neighborhood, through our streets. We have no sidewalks on Western Avenue. Our neighborhood's schoolchildren, our pedestrians, our bicyclists, they all have to use the city's streets for passage. The R1 Single Family Dwelling District is intended that the character and use of it be for housing and living purposes, free from encroachment and incompatible use. Why can't we just leave it at that? This new PUD proposal creates ninety, will create 98 additional vehicle trips per day. That's 49 vehicles, extra vehicles, entering and exiting our streets during the morning and evening traffic hours, the peak hours of the traffic. I can see how the Planning Commission's staff analyst, analyst's report can declare this as negligible. The same report also states that this property is R1 Zone District, is no longer suitable or viable for a new home. If so, then how all of a sudden does it become viable or suitable for a new large 8,600 square feet for an office building in the same R1 Zone property? Is this really an example of flexibility for limited development according to our land use growth management plan? I don't know. My neighbor, hey, my neighborhood has been publicly lied to, deceived by, and threatened by his, this group's leader. We do not have an ounce of trust in Mr. Newcomer anymore. He's thrown all of that away in the past. As said, one cannot unring a bell. He certainly rang his bell loud and clear for our neighborhood. We received no civility from any of those sounds he gave us. I ask you for the denial of this PUD. Just let us live our lives quietly, without danger. Once we had this, it's gone now, just like you and everyone else. We deserve to enjoy and preserve what little we have left.
Thank you, sir. I think your, your time has expired.
Thank you.
We definitely got the message, though. Thank you very much. Okay, I see one patron left to address the commission. Two, okay. So as additional, Mr. Blackman says, additional individuals make your way. Please make your way, sir. I'll just remind the public that we'd ask that you be as respectful as possible as you address the commission. If there are any direct concerns about commission staff or about city staff, please either give them to Ms. Wagers as, as our commission secretary or to me as chair.
Hello, my name is David Hewitt. I live at six oh one Southwest Marion Court. I didn't come, excuse me, I didn't come prepared to speak. But I, I did want to reinforce the feeling of the neighborhood. In fact, my property, as far as the drainage issue, really is, is the property that takes probably the biggest hit on runoff during the heavy spring rains. I get virtually a creek that runs through my property, through the backyard, and, and dumps out onto the street, and even days after the rains come, after the rains have quit, I'll be getting runoff from, from the water levels draining off from everything uphill from my property. And so I, I stand to benefit the most from any updates or upgrades to the drainage system uphill from my, but yet I have to speak against the improvements. I totally agree with the residents that there is a value to the neighborhood, its beauty, its architecture, and it is a, is a value that goes beyond the commerce and the value that Newcomer believes that they are going to generate. And I feel fortunate to have lived there. I, I, myself moved in, in late 2005. I probably overextended myself, overreached when I moved into the property, and the neighborhood's probably better than somebody like me deserves. I'm a nurse aide, I don't really make a lot of money. But having lived there as long as I have, I've developed respect for living in peace and quiet, and having a beautiful place, beautiful surroundings that have been there, you know, nice shady trees. I mean, the neighborhood has, has grown and aged, and it's, it is truly one of the gems of Topeka. And I have developed a respect for that, living there, that I didn't have when I initially moved in, and I have respect for the neighbors who feel the same way. Again, I mean, I fight water all the time coming off the hill, and the first thing I thought, well, great, they're going to improve, improve the drainage, because I'm the one that gets the runoff that comes through my property. And, but really, I'll dig, I'll dig all the French drains necessary to handle that water if, if only, you know, you'll, you'll give up on this idea of, of further commercialization encroaching on the borders of the neighborhood. I totally agree with the, the previous statements that commercialization often results in decay, and you can see that. On South Topeka Boulevard, I come from Florida, I saw so many historic neighborhoods deteriorate after commercialization, and after those businesses left, those places became urban blight. You don't want to turn this neighborhood into that. It's, it's a gem of Topeka, and it's, it's like they said, it's a hidden gem, and we kind of like it that way. And after I, I'm restoring the house I'm living in, and after I move on, there's going to be a family in there, and they're going to appreciate it long after I'm gone, and probably long after newcomers have left. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Howard Blackman. I'm the president of Quentin Heights, and I, we're across the street actually on this, but this caused a lot of stir in our neighborhood, period, and I'd like for you to just to see the amount of people that are here because of that. So stand up, the group that come up here from our neighborhood. So that lets you know, this is a hot potato. Now, I'll tell you this, I've sat in your seat, so I know a lot of things are going through your mind. And I can tell you this, as far as I'm concerned, I tell everybody this, and everybody sees the world through their own eyes. You know, I looked at this package when I came in today, and because I've been familiar and been through some of these things and whatever, I understand the package. I can't believe if you haven't been through a lot, you understand this package. A lot of things have happened since this package was originated. Now, nothing in my mind is going to be perfect when we come out of this, absolutely not. However, our main concerns was Western Street, the situation, we weren't going to talk about the size of a building, what all might we go into the building, this kind of thing. And I actually got a letter in there, and you'll see it, and it addressed a couple things. My big concern, you can say about the traffic where if you want to, the commercial traffic was a big thing to me. We've got kids riding bicycles around through the neighborhood, we have people walking through the neighborhood, and there's virtually no sidewalks in our neighborhood. We've got a bike route in our neighborhood on Twenty-seventh Street that is a recipe for disaster, I can tell you that right now. You all need to go take a look at it and whatever. One thing that I'll say, I think Mr. Newcomer listened to the neighborhood after the meeting. I know there was some significant changes from the original package. It's too bad that some things happened that this commission, there's nothing you can do to rectify some of the things that happened in the past. Can't do it. So, well, what I'm saying to you is, this is a real tough situation. I'm really glad to see that we're getting the situations of getting in and out off of Western Street. I'm really glad that the first package just really didn't go, because the building could have been anything, and you could have a myriad of different things in it. Now that building is built, it's supposed to be specifically for something and a specific size. Only thing I can tell you, I've said where you're sitting, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have our last patron that looks like to address the commission.
I wasn't going to speak, but I've lived in this, I live at seven twenty, my name's Billy Padilla, and I've lived in this neighborhood for over 20 years, at seven twenty-four Southwest Marion Court, which is a house from the seventeen seventeen, seven seventeen, Marion Court. My neighborhood is beautiful. Everybody takes pride in their homes. The one thing that I do not ever want to wake up to and go out to my front yard is to see parking lots or humongous buildings. Since we've lived there, since I've lived there, our friends and our families was always amazed at our neighborhood, because we are two blocks off of Topeka Boulevard, and you would never have known that. Everyone was like, wow, you're in the country, it's so quiet. Rarely, and I know things happen, rarely do we hear sirens. You know, rarely, there is not a lot of traffic in our area. I don't want that to change. It's peaceful, it's beautiful, and I have awesome neighbors that they do what we all look out. I'm a single person living there, and I know that my neighbors are watching out for me. I don't want a whole bunch of nothingness across the street from me, except for a building that's occupied during the day. That's about all I have to say. I love my neighborhood, and I don't want it to change.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission from the neighborhood? If not, we'd offer an opportunity for the proponents to address the commission, if Mr. Jarboe or, or Mr. Newcomer, or anyone from that party. Yes, sir. Let's, let's take a quick two-minute recess, I guess, and give, give them an opportunity to break. We'll come back at, at seven fifteen.
From, yeah, going off. So I, I don't, are they going to have a town hall meeting? They're still going to be, go ahead with that. Yeah, of course you're on the board of zoning appeals now, aren't you? With Tony Beck.
Okay. I think we will call our meeting back to order. We are now ready to hear from Mr. Jarboe and from the proponents.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you very much for this opportunity to come back and talk a little bit about this. Change is always difficult. It's difficult for all of us. And we always want things to stay the same, partly because we've grown comfortable with the same. And it's easy to generate fear out of any potential change. But I asked staff to put back up on the screen the plat in the neighborhood and I did that because I want you to look at across Western Avenue from the subject. You notice the church has a big L-shaped property that goes all the way down to 26th Street. And next to us, the Florence Crenshaw home, the former, which you heard testimony that that was downzoned. You see the commercial intervention, now churches aren't in commercial zoning, but churches draw lots of people and have big parking lots, just like commercial enterprises. The commercial intervention into this neighborhood was established long before this building was even built, 1968, which was the first office used. And you can see how the church to our east also occupies land basically to that same northern boundary. And this plan is not about encroaching into the neighborhood. It's not going further into the neighborhood than, in fact, not as far as the properties to the west used to. It's difficult when people are talking about their homes because we all have pride in our homes and we want to keep our home and we're afraid that any kind of a change is going to reduce the value in our home. And as Mr. Blackman said, we each come with our point of view and I don't think I can change their minds. Now, I think we could have Mr. Newcomer come up and talk about the various allegations that were made about him, but I don't think that accomplishes anything because that doesn't have anything to do with what we're here about tonight. So I'm not going to do that. Obviously, some of that wasn't very nice. It may be heartfelt, but you know, I've seen a lot of heartfelt things that weren't even accurate. I suspect there's another side to the story because again, as Mr. Blackman said, we all look at it through our own eyes. The law tells us that zoning is not, and I think the word in one of the cases is plebiscite, which is a nice dollar and a half word, say it's not a vote of the neighbors. It's not what do the neighbors want, it's what you all and ultimately the city council think is best for this community. If zoning was a vote of neighbors, where would you ever put a water treatment plant or a sewage treatment plant or an electrical substation that all the neighbors would say, oh, goodie, I want one of those next to my house? We wouldn't put anything anywhere if zoning was a vote of the neighbors because there would always be people next door who would say, not in my backyard. And I think actually, if you think about this proposal, a lot of what you heard is complaints about what's happening here actually go by the way. Because if this building is built, you won't see Topeka Boulevard from back in the neighborhood. You won't see a parking lot from back in the neighborhood. You won't see the light that's lighting the church parking lot today because our lighting's going to be modern downcast lighting. Most of the things that are complained of actually go away with this proposal. They're not made worse. I grant the heartfelt feelings. I grant the fact that people don't want change. And what you are charged with, perhaps you're thinking unfortunately tonight, but what you're charged with is carefully evaluating the pros and the cons of this and what's best for the community. I think at the end of the day, this proposal is the best for the community and even the best for this neighborhood. It's hard for them to see from their perspective. And I respect the fact that Mr. Blackman brought his friends and they all stood up for you. But it's not a vote. That's not what this is about. This is about what is good planning. And we really appreciate your consideration and hope for a favorable vote. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jarboe from commissioners? From commissioners?
Thank you.
I actually have one for you, Mr. Jarboe. So you mentioned a couple of things that I found very interesting, the plan to handle traffic flow by reorienting the building north and south. And we heard the city estimate that traffic probably will only be affected on both of those streets. One street, it's less than 1%. On the other, it's between 1% and 3% or so, if I'm correct.
That sounds about right.
Off a little bit. I wanted to ask a question really about, so for the neighbors who don't seem to buy that, I guess, I wasn't at the neighborhood meeting, I got a chance to read the notes, but how were the, how did the discussion go, you know, among Mr. Newcomer and among the proponents and the neighbors when they talked about traffic?
Well, first of all, I wasn't at the meeting either. So I'm only in a little different position than you. But I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Newcomer and Mr. Boyd, who were at the meeting. And I also talked to neighbors and understood the concern to be that if the building remained in its east-west configuration, the driveway remained coming out onto Western, that was currently perceived as a problem, more traffic on Western would only be worse. And to me, based on my conversations and reading staff's comments and listening to neighbors, that was actually the biggest issue, was increased traffic on Western. So that's when we started talking about, well, why did we lay the building out that way? And wouldn't it be better if we laid it out north and south? Honestly, we laid it out the way we did to keep the extra entrance for fire protection purposes. We thought the fire department would tell us, no, you got to have it. But when we talked to the fire department, they were equally pleased with an answer which cost us a little money, to put a fire hydrant into the site so that they can just pull their trucks up and plug into hoses right on the site. And the belief is, and this isn't part of the plan at the moment because it happens when we get back to the building permit phase again, that that's what will be required and that's what we plan on doing. So we left it there because we thought staff, not your staff so much, but other city staff was going to tell us we had to have that second entrance. But when we figured out we didn't have to have it, we thought we could solve the neighborhood issue of traffic by closing the driveway.
Okay. Thank you. I just kind of wanted to know how that conversation happened and if there was any insight we could gain out of kind of the discrepancy between what we heard from the estimates of how traffic would be affected compared to some of the concerns that were raised.
Obviously, they can't tell how much traffic will change on Western with, like when you eliminate that driveway, common sense would say fewer people are going to drive on Western. Now, drivers are funny creatures. When you talk to traffic engineers, they tell you that drivers figure out the quickest route to everywhere and where they can get out most easily. And certainly some people, probably today, and some people in the future, will exit our parking lot, drive down Western to 24th and out to Topeka Boulevard where there's a light. Because if you want to make a left turn, that may be easier in some people's minds. So there may be people who do that. But we don't know that. No one will.
Last quick question from me. You probably don't know the answer, but how did a storage building ever get built, right, in the drainage plane?
You'd have to ask the church. I suspect they had a story, they felt the need to have a storage building and they had a paved surface and it looked like a good place to put it.
Built it without checking or?
Well, it probably doesn't require a permit, actually. Depending on what it's built, I haven't really examined it to see what kind of a building it is, but if it's just sitting there, it probably doesn't have to have a permit.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions at all for Mr. Jarboe?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission before we close the hearing? I see no one. So at this point, I think we'll close the hearing and we are prepared to move on to have a discussion on this side.
I have a question that's probably concerned everybody involved, but why do we need a detention pond?
You know, I don't actually have an answer to your question. So the way this works is we allow the patrons to address the commission. We're really the advisory board who will make the recommendation to the city council on.
Right in front of the storage building.
So, but we don't have an answer to your question.
Okay, right in front of the storage building is a manhole cover.
Okay.
Is this where they're going to put the detention pond, right over top of the manhole cover?
I think probably what I'll do is turn to our proponents who may have a specific answer to that, whether it's Mr. Jarboe or Mr. Boyd, who can answer that question for us.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Lawback, SBB Engineering. There's currently a detention basin on site. I think there was an expansion back in probably 2009, is it? So we're actually decreasing the impervious area from what it currently is today. But since there's an existing detention basin to detain the water from the previous expansion, the new detention basin will basically be about the same size as what the existing one is.
How is it positioned relative to the inlet that's there now? The detention basin itself, is it within the, surrounding the inlet or is it adjacent to it?
Right now, it sits just upstream of the parking lot that we're actually removing. So we're actually improving the situation by removing the existing pavement that's, most of it's in the north area where it's hatched. The detention basin outlets onto that parking lot and sheet flows across that parking lot. So what we're planning on doing in Phase 1 is leaving that existing detention basin, removing that parking lot, making it a grass area, and then building a berm along the north property line. And the one gentleman that we actually, Mark and I talked to when we were out there trying to figure out what the drainage was doing, where that shed is, the shed is, it's not on footings or anything like that, it's just sitting there on some 2x4s. So right adjacent to that shed is where there's kind of a low area where the water's creeping around there and flowing to the north. So what our plan is, is to build a berm along there so that that water goes to the east towards Topeka Boulevard. And so then in the proposed, the second phase, when they build the building, we might be encroaching on the existing detention basin where we're going to have to basically relocate it. And this is a dry basin. And if you go out there and look at the one today, it's mostly dry, or it is dry as long as it's not raining and they have it nicely mowed and manicured. It's not going to be a retention basin where there's, you know, wetlands or Indian natives. It's a smaller detention basin that you'll hardly be able to tell that it's there. And in our stormwater management plan, we showed that the Hunter gear flow will continue on to the east. on to the east. We have an emergency spillway on the new basin and everything goes towards the east once we extend that berm to the west to make the drainage go to Topeka Boulevard where it should be going currently.
Any other questions from commissioners? No, I think we're going to close the hearing. And I think it's time for us to actually engage in discussion as commissioners and decide how we want to dispose of this item. So the way our rules work, we need to have discussion. We have this listed as an item to dispose of tonight. So we'd actually have to take a vote one way or the other on this tonight. If we were to choose to defer it, we'd have to actually take an affirmative vote to defer this item until the next, next time. I only mention that just because some of the other governing body rules that, yeah, I know function in this city, typically it's a discussion item first and then automatically at the next meeting, it's an action item. But that's not the case today. So, comment or discussion among commissioners? Who do we think?
I have a question for staff. This is a hypothetical question, I guess I'd say, but if the current owner did not function in this, in this property, proposed property, could a, what kind of facilities that in terms of scale could be built on that ground if that building wasn't there now?
Commissioner Haw, can you put the zoning on?
We can't hear you back there.
My question was this. If, if under the R1 zoning and the O1, 1 and 2 zoning, and if that building was not there now, what other kinds of structures could be built on that property? And what type of scale of a project could it be?
Commissioner Haw, the potential uses on R1 are limited, which is, you see there in yellow, are limited to single-family residential as well as some institutional uses. Schools and churches would also be able to, are also allowed use in the R1 district. If there is no, and in terms of a scale, I suppose the only limitations are the setbacks on any property line. It's typically 30 feet on the rear and the front of an R1 property. So really, the scale is not, is only limited by, by those 30-foot setbacks around the property, along the street and in the back. So it could be as big as, we don't have a limitation other than that.
Thank you.
Ms. Cabazos?
This is for the staff. Some of the concerns were about the driveway entrance on Western. And I'm wondering if these new plans were made available to the neighborhood and if they had the opportunity to see the new plans with the driveway and the trees and the requirements on the structure.
Yes, they did. After it was submitted, after it was resubmitted, we sent it to them and they were re-notified as well as part of legal requirements. So yes, we sent it to them ahead of time and they were, they were sent it by mail too. And they are on the website as well. The city website, the planning department page.
And if I may interject, one of the things that we found on the positive side of the ledger of closing, you heard, you heard traffic, Mr. Jarboe's traffic reasons for closing that. You know, from a planning standpoint, we also heard a lot about commercialization of the neighborhood and intrusion and encroachment of that aspect. And so we were very cognizant of maintaining a adequate character transition, if you will, to maintain character. And I would say the biggest thing that we see when we look at developments that kind of bring out the commercialization of a development is a parking lot. A parking lot, in this case, that fronts a street. Anytime you see a lot of asphalt or a lot of concrete, a bunch of cars, that's commercial in character in many respects. So when they came forward with the idea of closing that and then putting the parking behind the building in essence and shielding it from the street, I think that was a big, big plus for keeping that character and not commercializing that frontage of the road for us. So I just throw that in there because that change was pretty significant when it came back to us.
Ms. Cabazos?
One more question. What, cause I'm, I'm not seeing it, so it's probably my lack of eyesight here, but what is the increase in number of parking spaces or is there an increase?
No, they are not increasing the number. They're just reconfiguring parking.
Okay.
It's already there. So it's better designed for shared use by the church and newcomer.
Okay. Thank you.
And this may be a silly question also, but number five, revising note number three to staff and maintain a residential appearance on all four sides. How is that, how is that enforced?
Commissioner Jordan? So we have a note in the PUD as a sort of a background to your question. Architectural elements shall be consistent with the existing building number one. That's the current building, office building on the site. Elevation is to be approved by the planning department at the time of the development plan review. And what we wanted to add to that was a provision that we also maintain a residential appearance on all four sides. On commercial buildings, sometimes you have a back or a side that has dumpsters and entryways that don't quite look like the front of the building. So we wanna maintain that appearance on all four sides. And we actually have in your packet, an elevation that the applicant submitted to mimic and or mirror the existing building on-site, which is what the notes recommend. And you can see a lot of architectural detail in it and specifically what the materials are, what the window openings, what the roof elevations would look like. And it looks in large part almost identical to what is out there now. So we would, you know, we would wanna hold them to, that's what the PUD can do, hold them to this design.
So a quick question, I guess, for Mr. Feinander, and this is just for my education and probably for a lot of other people. So as I'm listening to the, to the concerns of the residents and I was reading much of the information that was included, and I was trying to kinda keep a quick count of some of the concerns I heard. And I heard one of them that was a specific reference to property values. I heard two that were primarily about storm, about drainage water, drainage, storm water. Heard another, four, that were about traffic, but I heard eight that were specifically about the character of the neighborhood. And it was kind of a nebulous catch-all type of, you know, the commercialization you just mentioned, all kinds of other things. Would you mind giving us kind of a quick 30-second Reader's Digest, you know, version of what it means? What are the standards that you are looking for when you want to make sure that it, R1 remains R1 and you want to keep encroachment from commercial activity from, you know, protect them from encroachment? And keep in mind, I'm a slow-talking fellow from Oklahoma, so you may have to choose your words carefully.
Commissioner Woods? Character for those who throw that word around really is about reflecting what's there. So when you go out to the neighborhood and you look around and you see buildings that have the materials and the shapes and the scale of what's out there, that is the character. When you don't see parking lots in the front, when you don't, actually, they do have, there are driveways cut in the front in the neighborhood, but you don't see expanses of concrete and asphalt along the front. You see a lot of trees, you see a lot of landscaping, whether it's in the yard or mature, a lot of maturity in the vegetation. So I think, you know, those, to me, kinda stood out or stand out in any older neighborhood and that has as much charm as this does. And I think the, you know, I think the big kind of decision is, A, is this expansion in keeping or harming that character? And then B, you know, we're not approving anything beyond this property. There was some mention of some forays into other properties, but that is something that we certainly don't, are not approving here tonight or recommending at all to approve. It's just, I think it's a bit of the unknown is, well, what if somebody comes back now that it's this close to our neighborhood? Wouldn't it be that easy, you know, much easier to get that encroachment into, into the neighborhood? So, so that's the character answer. I believe we can recommend that this encroachment would, there would not be any further encroachment that we certainly would recommend beyond, beyond the property lines that are before you tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
For staff, like Mr. Woods, I kinda tracked the comments and the principal things that I was hearing was, was the impact of the view out onto Topeka Boulevard, lights, et cetera. If the commission chooses not to pass staff's recommendation, in what way does that actually accomplish what the neighbors are desiring? How does it restore the character of the neighborhood that it seems has already changed?
Commissioner Canar, I, if this does not pass, then you have, what is out there is a green space with trees that would remain. Sightlines would obviously not be inhibited. You can see through the property. Lighting wouldn't change. I don't know, actually, I don't know if lighting right now is an issue existing, but certainly an improvement as part of this plan. We do have a note that requires the lighting to be shielded down and not to reflect beyond the property lines or glare beyond property lines. So I don't, I don't know necessarily if that answers, but if you've been to the site, you would, you would see that, yeah, there is, there is sightlines there that would remain and parking lot would remain and sight of more parking behind would remain. But then you, you also have the unknown, there are some, some trees that would not remain.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or comments among commissioners? If not, I think we are prepared to call the question to entertain a motion on how to dispose of this item. Is there a motion for E2? Among commissioners?
I'll move that we accept the staff recommendation.
There's a motion to accept the recommendation of staff and approve or recommend the approval?
Second.
There's a second? A motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? If there is none, then I believe we are prepared to vote.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Beck abstains. Ms. Cabazos?
Aye.
Mr. Gales abstains. Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0 with two abstaining.
Okay. So, you'll get the...
Do you wanna continue?
No, no. You may, yeah. So for our patrons who came to visit us today, I think probably what we should make sure and make clear is that there is a procedure if they still would like to contest this.
City commissioner? Well, I don't really wanna give them all your voice.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Carron, we had a earlier conversation with them earlier in the process, at least some of the neighbors about the opportunity to file protest. So there, at least some of them are familiar with that and will, I think that's what you were referring to. And we'll keep them informed.
It's all good.
Oh, I understand.
Is it contained?
No.
The next time it's on view.
I didn't drive by all the time now.
It draws me in.
Oh, we missed you guys. Kevin and I got caught up.
Truck stops?
Let's roll.
Did you guys?
Well, I would say we move to item F1. And I will, I see this probably is yours, Mr. Feinander, or is this Mr. Haw's? Mr. Haw's got this?
I'm gonna go ahead and present this and it's getting kinda late, so I'll try not to be too long on this. I think the memo speaks for itself pretty much. On a regular basis, try every two years to present the planning commission with an update to the zoning code to address inconsistencies, inefficiencies, issues that have come up in the previous two years with interpretations of the code. We like to call this a cleanup zoning ordinance because it's not really intended to be really substantial. It's not, not as, not everything is what we consider a substantive policy change. However, there are some that we are suggesting. Not, we're not asking for any specifics tonight or even presenting anything, any specific changes, but just for discussion. There are several of these that we've identified that are potentially substantive in that they change the standards in some meaningful way. Or some of them are actually, could be pretty significant, have a significant change on how things are done. So I'm gonna go over each of these and if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me and ask. So the first one on the list is, oh, just... So the first one on the list is, oh, just for clarification, too. So in the next few months, we're going to bring these back for discussion. We're going to bring back a list with some actual language. What we anticipate is going through about half of our list for the first meeting, or the next meeting, and I guess that's in September. And then the meeting after that, we'd go through the balance of the list for discussion. And then we would come back in November for you to make a recommendation, and then you'd be making a recommendation to the city council for adoption. So the list, there's quite a few other items on the list, but they're not, again, they're not really substantial policy changes. But we think those are improvements as well. So truck stops and truck parking. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not explicitly call out truck stops and how they're to be treated in the zoning code, and which zones are allowed, conditional and prohibited in. We've had, in the past two years, two proposals for truck stops that this never became a huge issue because they went away. Honestly, they just didn't, they just fell through. But the way we were looking at those is potentially being treated like what we call auto service type three, not allowed in every commercial district, subject to specific use requirements in some districts. But we feel we need a stronger call-out on truck stops, and also some specific use requirements. And so we'll be bringing back something for you to consider. Short-term rental housing. Short-term rental housing is something, right now, it's not a big problem in Topeka. It potentially can be. This is one of those items that we're bringing for you to discuss for the sake of modernizing our code and keeping up with trends. You're probably aware, there's a proliferation of short-term rental housing. Basically rentals that replace the hotel rooms. And in some cities, it's become a really big deal for various reasons. The issue is potentially the way it impacts a residential neighborhood. If someone lives in a home in a single-family residential neighborhood, and they just start renting them out to different people every weekend, it loses its residential character, becomes a hotel. The other issue is that those units can compete with the local hotel businesses, and it also escapes lodging taxes. And that's, and so those potentially aren't paying their fair share, and they're not competing fairly. So we've looked at some cities and how they've addressed them, and we will be bringing something forward for you to consider. Surfaces of parking and storage lots, this is a fairly, kind of a mundane issue, probably, but it does have a lot of effect on a lot of people. Right now, our zoning ordinance just refers to standards for paving surfaces for parking lots and storage lots. If you look for those standards, they don't really, I hate to say this, they don't really exist. They're based on just practice, what the city's done. And the city has historically required paving. There have been some exceptions where they've allowed storage areas, what we call lay-down yards, for storing materials in industrial applications. They've allowed those to be paved, excuse me, surfaced with gravel. So what we're doing is working on a document that will be referred to in the zoning code, but it will not actually be codified in the code. That allows us to modify the document as new information comes to light, but also have a real rational way for requiring paving, not requiring everyone to go by the same standard, because a one-size-fits-all is probably overkill, and it's onerous, overly onerous for some applications, just because, a good example would be a garbage truck or a semi-tractor trailer requires a higher standard of paving than, say, a storage yard or a tow lot for vehicles. Mobile vendors and temporary uses. The city has been treating mobile vendors like, oh, like fireworks stand, for example, or a small truck that sells tacos and burritos, that kind of thing. There's one down on Sixth Avenue you're probably aware of. We treat those right now, just if they're allowed in that zoning district, they are allowed, but that's not called out specifically in our zoning code. There are some other mobile vendor situations where, for example, if, say, there's a festival in Gage Park. Gage Park is zoned R1, so you could say that, well, you can't allow retail vendors because it's a residential district. That's something that probably needs to be addressed, again, to keep up with the times and things that are happening.
Food trucks.
Food trucks, another trend. So, and people generally like food trucks, they're excited about them, and so I think it's a good thing. Staff recommends that we keep up with that and try to find some way to accommodate them, but control them in some reasonable fashion. Cargo containers as accessory storage. So currently, cargo containers, you're familiar with cargo containers, are the kind of containers someone can drop on a lot and then come back and pick it up later. They're used for moving, they're used for, if someone's demoing a building, they might keep it out there for a short period of time. But they're quite frequently used, long-term, for storing certain things. One example is a tire shop, they always have waste tires that they store. And so if they don't have a cargo container, they're going to store it in some kind of storage shed or a storage yard. Right now, the zoning code only allows these in I-1 and I-2 districts, industrial zones. However, there are a lot of uses that could potentially, that potentially use these that are in some of the commercial districts, particularly the C-4 and C-3 districts, and even in the mixed-use districts. This is one of those things where we have a lot of, we have quite a few issues with these, and it's, we're fighting, what we're finding is we're kind of fighting a losing battle if we just treat them the way we've been treating them. So we're looking at a way to maybe accommodate them, but require certain things to mitigate them, like screening, landscaping setbacks, maybe they need to be stored behind the building where they're not visible from the street. So that's what that is about. The next one, hotels in the O-N-I-3 office and institutional district. This one kind of speaks for itself. There's not a lot of O-N-I-3 zoning. O-N-I-3, as you might recall, is the most intense office and institutional district there is. So you can have large office buildings in O-N-I-3 district, you can have office parks, some institutional uses, but currently hotels, motels are just expressly prohibited. And so this is a proposal that they would be a conditional use in those districts. Purpose and applicability of the X districts, the mixed-use districts. Currently, the language in the code states that the purpose of these are strictly to implement neighborhood plans that have been adopted for traditional neighborhood areas where there's traditional neighborhood development. There might be some opportunity, and it might be wise and appropriate, to allow the application of this kind of zoning in areas outside those traditional neighborhoods. As you go west from downtown, there are certain areas actually in the land use and growth management plan, the city's comprehensive plan, the land use almost of the comprehensive plan, that identify some areas for mixed use. But there's no other zoning classification that really implements that fully, and this is an opportunity to do that. One thing about the X districts is there's an emphasis on design as well as mixed use, more so than the other zoning districts. So it might be an appropriate tool in some of these other areas. Fence regulations. The issues here are, we do allow fences as high as eight feet for residential use. It's a pretty tall fence. There could be concerns about the appearance of that, other impacts of that, the wind load of a large fence. The other issue is, in commercial districts and office districts, there are few restrictions on the placement of fences. They are allowed as high as eight feet in front, setbacks, and along streets. And there are some examples of that. There's a parking lot over by St. Francis and Stormont Vale, it's a parking lot in Medical Services District with just a plain chain-link fence right along the property line. And that meets our code. So we really don't have a lot of tools to address some of the unanticipated negative impacts of fences, and so that's what, we'll be looking into that. Next item on here is trash dumpster location. There are currently no standards that specifically say where trash dumpsters to be located on a commercial property, and no screening requirements. And it's appropriate that we have some kind of screening requirements to address the negative impact of those. Site and landscape ordinances. Right now, the minimum threshold for a site plan application to the planning department is 15,000 square foot addition or new construction. So if you consider, I use this example a lot, a Walgreens store is about 13,000 to 14,000 square feet. If someone's building a building, or, excuse me, if someone's building an addition to a building, a commercial building, and it's less than that, if you interpret the code literally, you would say that they do not have to get site plan approval from the planning department before they apply for a building permit. So a significant addition to a building doesn't require that. Similar to the landscape ordinance, there are situations where someone could be making a substantial addition to a parking lot that's adjacent to residential use or something, a sensitive use, and there's no requirement that they submit a landscape plan or have any landscaping associated with their project. So what staff is suggesting is that we lower those thresholds so more people fall into that category, and we feel that's a reasonable, a reasonable requirement. Artist and manufacturing, this is another one of those things. There's kind of a growth in this, and there's also kind of an economic development imperative for this. The goal, some of the goals and ideas for trying to provide for artisan manufacturing, let me define artisan manufacturing a little bit first. So a good example would be, say, a microbrewery that makes very small quantities of craft beer. If that's done in a small setting, that would be an example of artisan manufacturing. Another would be maybe someone who makes small food items in a small space, doesn't require a lot of truck traffic, everything is local, that would be an example of artisan manufacturing. So some of the goals and ideas for addressing this is to promote small business through more flexible regulations, encourage redevelopment of older buildings and properties. So if you look at areas like Noto in North Topeka, or even areas around downtown, we have buildings that aren't very fully utilized. The zoning is not, does not provide for manufacturing, but it might be appropriate for artisan-level manufacturing that could make use of that building, and also could be a startup for a new business. Protect neighboring uses, encourage an entrepreneurial and creative culture. So these are some of the ideas. And so those are, what we anticipate is bringing back some standards for that as well. So that's what I have. If you have any direction, any discussion, be happy to sit for that.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Hall? Appreciate your updating us on that. So do you anticipate that we would have action on that? I guess my question for you then is, are you seeing this as something that we would need to be prepared to kind of look in greater review further down the road, or are we going to just deal with this as a larger context of cleaning up the zoning?
What we expect is that the next meeting, we would bring a part of these, maybe half of them, to you for, you know, actual amendments, drafted amendments, for you to discuss. The next meeting, we would bring you the balance of that.
Okay.
And then in November, we would bring that back to you for action, to make a recommendation to the governing body.
Fair enough. Mr. Chair, if I may, there was one that was not included on here, but you will see, it's really its own kind of separate thing, but we're going to fold it in here. For those of you who've been, it's probably been a few months since you've heard us talk about the D1, conversion from C5 to D1 zoning downtown, which has design guidelines as part of that. We will bring that to you as well, and that's going to get ramped up here in the next month or so, and that'll be part of this package, but we'll talk about that separately when it comes. So I just wanted you to note that. Excellent. Any further items of discussion for staff? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Very second. Any opposed? Seeing none, adjourn.